Everyone in the public, this is Arnaud.
Yeah.
It's 10-3. I'm going to ask one of the speakers, but it's a Zoom meeting also that you're going to find yourself. We'll all be standing in place. That's it.
Like the Indians still plan.
The United States of America. The Republic, which stands when we send.
I can't feel the identity by myself, can't be cheap. Give the voice like. I'll leave to that. We're going to discuss the capital.
Yeah, so just to remind everybody, um, the capital, the capital committee is accepting our capital expenditure forms and requests. To inform fiscal year 23 and the following four fiscal years thereafter. Uh, we're, uh, we're asking that, we're asking that all departments, boards and committees. Uh, uh, have their requests and the accompanying forms uh, over to us uh, by the 18th. Which is just over a week away. Uh, we have, uh, we've worked with a number of folks, with a number of department heads, boards and committees. Uh, if you have any issues, if you have any questions. Oh yeah, I'm here, just reach out. Uh, I got, uh, already I know we um, have some from fire. Uh, we're expecting some from police. Um, we have uh, some and we're anticipating more from highway. Uh, uh, we have a feasibility study for like a new, uh, uh, for a new fire building. Uh, we are anticipating a request, I believe, from Garland um, in the library board of trustees. Uh, like for, uh, the feasibility study for the library as well. Um, we have a, uh, I think we're requesting so far from the town clerk, I want to say, like, my, he said one in already. Um, uh, I, oh, and a few other folks, and I had a call, um, actually with Dr. Isa. Uh, like a few weeks ago, and I anticipate uh, that this, that the schools are going to like send some in as well. So that will be helpful because we want them to be part of it.
One notification.
Uh, yeah, like, so if anyone has any questions, any issues, uh, can issue their questions about the process. Uh, I'm here, just reach out. Uh, I'm excited, I mean, I'm excited that we're actually coming up with a capital plan. Uh, for FY 23 and for the next uh, five years that will really help us address all of our needs in town. Um, anyone have any questions on that?
I know that the Star Commission last night.
Yes.
They were, uh, five year plan.
Sweet. Uh, it's perfect. Anyone else on the capital planning process?
Five year plan, Mike, for the sewer department?
Yes.
We don't use any town funds, so why would we need to fill out a five year plan?
Uh, you're like, the sewer department is part of the town, like, even though they are dedicated funds, we want to have a list and an inventory of uh, of what the sewer department's anticipated needs and projects are.
But we don't ever use any town funds.
This phone asks you where the funds are coming from, so you can put down, we make your request or whatever. Where the funds come from, obviously, it's coming from.
The radio.
Yes, yep.
But that's quite easy.
Right, yep. And Mr. Pines?
Yeah, we're helping, we're making a request for a couple of roll offs.
Okay.
The condition of that, those are up there. A swap shed and new uh, shed for the tenant. And lastly, a private service system. So everything can be done electronically instead of uh, what we're doing now, which is kind of high cost solely. And provide better record keeping also, what we're taking in and uh, getting rid of out there, so.
Thank you.
That'll be done by, by the 18th.
So I appreciate, uh, no, I appreciate it. I think Mr. Ryan probably appreciates it as well, so.
Yeah, I think you should streamline the process, you know, none of myself or residents, you know, track um, the materials, the things that get thrown out.
Oh yeah, no, it seems great. Uh, you know, I was talking about a shed for you, like, to keep you in and out of the elements.
Dude, that'd be great too, you know, the ship there is existing, it's probably about 15 years old. Um, it serves the purpose for now, but I know, understand that with a swap shed also, it's going to open up many more avenues for the Board of Health to go up and receive advice from the.
Okay. Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Anybody else? Uh, anybody who has questions about the capital planning?
Mike?
Yes.
Uh, just to, just to comment on what Woody had said.
Hmm.
Even though they have a separate um, Board of Commissioners. They are not a district, they're a department of the town, and should there be major capital expenses, they would have to appear on the warrant for a town meeting vote. So it's not necessarily the source of funding, it's the fact that it is part, as you described, it's part of the overall town budget, just like so many other things are. So that's, that's what's important to recognize about the sewer department.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anyone else? Hearing none. Um, I wanted to kind of, uh, yeah, kind of come through, we're all with. Uh, uh, we have a draft, uh, oh yeah, quite a 23 budget process calendar, uh, that we wanted to go over with anybody. That takes us uh, now to the end of coming, oh, sorry, the end of coming June. Second. So, Janelle?
Yes. Um, okay. As Mike said, this is kind of just a draft calendar for the FY 23 budget process. As we mentioned, November 2021, um, hopefully you guys will be able to submit the capital requests for by the 18th of November. In December, I plan to send out the budget worksheets to everyone, departments, boards and committees, that way you guys can start to work on that. In January 22, the budgets will be due to the town administrator and the financial team will um, put together a proposed revenue forecast. In February 22, the town administrator will be with the departments, committees, um, the education budget will be submitted and the board of selectmen will begin their review process. That process will continue through March, and once that finalizes, they will make budget and warrant recommendations. In April and May, the finance committee will need to review the proposed budgets and make budget and warrant recommendations as well. And then in June, we will propose the operating budget at town date. Any questions? Okay. No, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just as, just as a follow up on that, uh, uh, yeah, we met as a financial team yesterday afternoon. Uh, uh, you know, obviously, uh, uh, yeah, like where we are now in the calendar, we just, uh, uh, we just actually finished the first four months um, of fiscal year 2022, um, and we had an opportunity to examine where our revenues are now, especially in terms of local receipts. Uh, uh, yeah, like, as they relate to the projections that we made last spring. Uh, uh, you know, now, now in almost every revenue account, uh, we're turning on projection, but we, uh, we're turning on projection. We are not, uh, uh, like ahead of projection in a lot of areas either. Uh, so like, as we plan forward for uh, FY 23, uh, 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 I think it's, uh, I think, I, I think based on what we're looking at in terms of available revenues, it's going to be a very tight year. Uh, uh, yeah, uh, 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 you know, and that means that the Yelp said that we are going to, uh, you know, have an issue with funding uh, anything over and above where we are now. So I just want to, uh, I actually set that expectation now that as we go forward, uh, uh, into 23, it's going to be a tight year. Uh, 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 can I, uh, uh, and any help with identifying any efficiencies? Uh, 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 do any help in terms of identifying savings without, uh, actually adding any new people or programs, I think is going to be imperative. Uh, uh, at this point, and what we're tracking and where we're going, uh, into FY 23, like, and I know it's, uh, yeah, uh, uh, yeah, I think we're really going to need to buckle up the next few years because I think, uh, 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 all the challenges that we, uh, had anticipated at the beginning of COVID and now really coming to a head. Uh, uh, and it's something we're going to have to deal with as we go forward. Uh, any questions on that at all?
Mike, just a quick question, who are the members of the finance team and what's the line that they represent?
Yep, so the uh, uh, so the financial team, uh, yeah, includes the town administrator, the town accountant, uh, the town assessor, uh, the, uh, the town tre, the town tre, the town treasurer, collector and the executive assistants to the board of selectmen. Yep.
Just want to make a comment that, uh, thank you, uh, for getting this together. Uh, you went on a void, last fight of the process, you came in March, you started March, like, already started the process.
Hmm.
Tom Cotton was leaving, I just think it's going to work a lot better this.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. Uh, uh, any, uh, uh, anyone else have, uh, have any questions where we are, what we're thinking, what we're anticipating going forward? Uh, at all? Uh, anyone on Zoom? Okay.
So I'm, are you done?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask for a request from each department, I'm going to start with Jonathan Gale because he's uh, going to leave at 10:30. So just wanted to come out. Jonathan?
Hey, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so first of all, um, I just want to let everybody know that we, thanks to uh, the work that Kevin Smith Jr. did, we now have a, a Facebook page for the Commission on Disability, which we launched the other day. Um, I will be adding periodically some things into it, so mostly some links to sources and resources. Um, and when there's announcements to be made for things that are beneficial and sourceful to the town, so thank you, Kevin, for doing that. Um, and um, Mike, I know you have administrative rights to it, so feel free to stop anything you don't think we should put up there. That's, that's ongoing, uh, for those of you who don't know, they are doing work over at the middle school on the curb cuts and railings to make them uh, fully accessible, that has been long overdue. Um, they've also been grinding some of the other areas that were broken up, which were areas for wheelchairs and walkers. That process hopefully will be finished in the next week or 10 days, the railings are in the process of being ordered. Um, but that's going to give a whole new look to the front of the school and will give people much, much better access. That should, as I said, should be completed uh, very, very shortly. I'm planning to, to, I haven't been able to get because of my schedule to the sidewalks yet on Center Street. I know there was a question mark that came up at a, a recent meeting, I'm hoping to get to that tomorrow, actually. And I can report back at our next monthly meeting and um, to the board of selectmen on both that, those sidewalks. Um, other than that, we, we get a calls from residents asking different questions about accessibility and resources and so forth in general and refer those on to the appropriate agencies or organizations they can go to. Um, I sent out recently, and I'm, I think all of you received the information with regard to open meeting laws and public meetings for people with disability. There was one of the three workshops already that I attended. Um, I know some of you have planned to attend either one or two or all three of the workshops for that information. Once the workshops are completed after all three, I'm going to put together information and I will put it uh, on our Facebook page, but also disseminate it through the board of selectmen's office so that uh, everyone has the information on open meeting accessibility, uh, resources and criteria so that going forward, that's something we, we can ultimately work towards trying to make as accessible as possible. We do it now, but there's also a lot of resources we can avail ourselves of that are no cost and so forth. So there are little other things going on here and there, but that's kind of the update for now, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? No question, Jonathan, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Uh, Carrie? Do you have anything to, uh, report to us, finding ZBA?
So, uh, for planning, as most of you know, we have the continuation of the ma, of the hearing for the major modification for Brook Street Solar. Um, so Chief McGee, can you just confirm if you're going to be at the hearing next week?
I will be.
Much appreciated. Um, so we are, the peer review engineer is wrapping up his comments. Um, he wanted to incorporate um, comments from the site visit, so he was wrapping that up and we're hoping to have that by the end of this week so that they can have it. Then Forest Hills, I spoke to the attorney, Joshua Glass, he's going to ask for another continuation. Yep, so, um, I think that's pretty much it that I have on my end for planning. Um, ZBA, not too much going on. Um, some of you have received an email, um, we have gotten notification, so I sent out an email to the 40B Committee, the zoning board of appeals, and uh, the ZBA's um, attorney, I'm in touch with the, I think it's the Department of Housing. Um, we got notification that one of our affordable units got sold at a market rate. So, um, now we're looking for our next course of action, so I'll keep you apprised on that. Um, that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Professor Goulart?
Uh, yeah, um, the assessors have received approval of all of the documentation that's been submitted in preparation to set the tax rate. Uh, we, uh, I know the town accountant has forms to fill out, uh, to get to us, but we're looking at a date of, um, December 8th, I believe, is when the Board of Selectmen plans to have the classification hearing, meeting, so that the tax rate can be set. All of the free cash accounts have been approved, I got a email this morning, a few minutes ago, saying that they had approved the free cash amount for the Dayton Water District. So I think all the districts have also been, had their free cash certified. Um, so from uh, what Carrie mentioned about that home uh, in the orchards, uh, yes, we discussed that briefly at an assessors meeting. And so the assessors office will be working uh, with zoning as far as getting the information together because obviously, uh, the property was sold way over what it should have been sold for, and uh, obviously, there should be deed restrictions, so anyhow, the assessors office will be working with uh, Mrs. Easterday on that to get the information together. Um, from a stormwater perspective, um, five members of the uh, committee were at a site visit on Brook Street to uh, go over um, and get answers to a lot of questions relative to the solar farm, that grasshopper is building. And um, stormwater is waiting for the planning board's next meeting to find out what action they plan to take. And depending upon what the planning board does, the stormwater committee may have to do some things, or the only question we have at present are panels in the solar basin, so, um, so that's out there. We're working on um, the solar farms on Tremont Street and Middle Street. And um, I got some new information that came in on that a few minutes ago, and I just forwarded it to um, Chief McGee and, and Mr. uh, Rhimes and Mr. Aggar and um, Mr. Pilling. Um, some new information that we didn't have previously, so uh, that'll be something we'll be looking at. Uh, other than that, we have the usual kinds of um, uh, questions, complaints, concerns about places in town, we're following up with uh, stormwater issues. Um, some of them have been continued, uh, we're waiting for plans for cleanup of a site on County Street. Just a public information thing I want to mention, we did have a concerned citizen contact the uh, Board of Health relative to what they thought was soap suds in the Segregance River at the Elm Street Bridge. And the person went to Brook Street, checked out the river there, and again, saw this foamy white stuff. Um, if you've been on Lincoln Avenue recently, uh, the Three Mile River also has this, this is not, this is not pollution from somebody pumping a washer into the river or pumping septic waste or anything else. This is a natural occurrence of, of decomposition of organic materials. And with all the rain we've had and the rivers being flowing quite quickly and stirring up everything. Uh, that's what is, uh, that's what you're seeing, it is not pollution per se. Um, I did forward a copy of a uh, informational thing from uh, the EPA relative to, uh, and it was EKDP about this phenomenon that happens, it's a natural occurrence. So the only thing I would say is that if anyone has concerns about anything they see in the river that looks like soap suds, um, unless there is a definite odor of septic waste and it doesn't smell like uh, decomposition of leaves and things like that, uh, that should be reported to the Board of Health, but for the time being, what you're seeing is a natural occurrence. And once the rivers slow up a bit, um, we probably won't be seeing all those suds and things, but um, just in case anyone else hears about it, uh, that's what's going on. Um, so that's what, that's all I have for uh, assessors and stormwater. I do have to leave the meeting for an MMA meeting at just before 11, so I'll just leave when the time comes if we're still in session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart. Uh, Lisa, do you have anything for us for conservation?
Hi, um, we have various things, I mean, it's getting a little challenging, but um, we're hanging in there. Sorry, did you turn that down? Okay, um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so we have long built homes, um, requested a continuance, and we um, actually, in the meantime, have, have heard from them, they've um, submitted a revised plan that our engineers and wetland scientists are reviewing. Um, so I expect that um, they'll be at our next meeting to discuss this. Um, because it is continued, um, our next meeting, just so everybody knows, is November 18th. Um, Forest Hills, as everybody knows, um, has requested a continuance for us as well. Uh, due to the fact that they're trying to come up with the responses to the planning board's recommendations. Um, um, Richard Faderoff from Stonegate Landing has received two um, orders of conditions from us. Um, we closed two hearings at our last meeting for lots, two and four, for two single family homes. Um, we also have uh, requested a mitigation plan from Reed's at 1050 Williams Street, which we've received from Outback Engineering. Um, we've tabled this due to the fact that there are some other permits that they need to get in order to um, restore the wetland areas, uh, they have to meet the water quality regulations and Army Corps. So we're waiting on them to get um, responses from those other agencies. Um, since our last meeting and for our November 18th meeting, we'll have two new notices and intent. Um, one for 170 Beach Street and um, one for um, County, Zero County Street. Uh, Zero County Street is a new home, 170 Beach is a replacement system and a replacement garage, as well as some landscaping. Um, we continue to address some of the violations around town, um, and educate people on, you know, what's allowed and what's not allowed. Um, and um, we could use some new members, or at least we have an opening for an associate member at the time. So I don't know if um, anyone knows anyone interested in being on the Conservation Commission, but um, we could use help.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, Jonathan?
Thank you.
Hi, um, we're starting our, um, we have some preschool story times and some um, toddler story times, starting next week, I think. And yeah, um, the friends are doing their gift card fundraiser through November for Christmas, and I just heard this week that we are, um, we qualified, we, we got our acceptance letter from um, the federal government through the FCC, and the um, I just know acronyms for them, USAF, for our five devices, so we can pair them up with our five hotspots that we've already gotten for CARES Act funding, so um, we can start the process of buying those devices and start offering that service to people, and so we're moving along.
Thank you, Jonathan. Tom?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
So as you know, we're in a transition of seasons, um, our snow readiness is almost complete, probably latter part of next week. Um, thanks to the Sleppman, we had a great response in our higher trucks. Um, state of Massachusetts is making the news out here in Colorado with uh, similar problems, but um, we, we should be in good shape and ready next week, like I said. Uh, on another note, outside of the apartment, I mean, everyone knows what we're doing uh, behind the scenes on various projects, but um, uh, in particular, I'm not sure, uh, this Board of Selectmen in particular was formally invited for the Saturday after Thanksgiving. I just want to put a bug out there, I'm not the person to do the actual invite, but I want to make sure it's on uh, the Sleppman's agenda. It'd be great if you guys could be there for the tree lighting, and I still need to meet with uh, both chiefs on uh, possibly reversing the parade section and some other subtle changes on a campus, I mean, the complex there. So uh, there's some, some planning that needs to happen next week when I return.
Is that it, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Mrs. Goulart?
Chairman, uh, I just have a question, uh, Tom, which tree is going to be lit? Is it going to be the one on the far north end of the field?
Uh, we're still working on that, it, it may be the whole complex at the same time. Um, we're, we're working on that, because the actual festivities is going to be at this time right at the pavilion, that's where the stage is going to be.
Oh, okay, um, I, I have a request then, um, I'd like a table inside the pavilion because I've got uh, the handouts from the stormwater committee, and one of the handouts, as you know, is a calendar, so I want to get them out before the end of the year, so I just need a tiny little table.
Yes, that, that should be no problem, there's a bunch of picnic tables in there now, and it shouldn't be no problem, just set up something more simple like you're suggesting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Let's talk around the room, uh, surprise, something for the health.
Hi, good morning. Uh, so the COVID numbers, uh, it's been steady, it's not up or down, but I know, we don't have the exact numbers, or I don't have them this morning, but I will have the health agent, uh, run the numbers for you tonight, I think you'd like to announce it.
Yep.
At the regular meeting, uh, he was out on the park this morning and I wasn't able to get it. Uh, trying to receive a number of credits going. Last month, there was, well, I went to the health agent, he said none, nothing. Uh, I've been busy this month, privately, probably. I've been busy this month privately probably September. So we're keeping up with it. The increase in hours certainly will be a plus. We have a loose animal issue. We kind of have ongoing problems with individuals. Some of the fowl are getting hit by dogs out of the standing. And the pigs they have are getting loose and digging up private property. The health agent and the animal control office already addressed it once. They're going to be revisiting it as soon as she comes back from vacation. We're going to think it's Friday, I'm told. As you know, the kennel bylaw did not pass at last time. We, it was kind of unfortunate because a lot of people wanted to get their license for residential kennel. A lot of women's were in the process of spending all our money. We're meeting today to re-discuss some of this. The kennel bylaws in place. Part of the regs are already, well, actually one section of the regs are already done. And Tom Clark and I have agreed that they will serve the purpose. Plus, so we're revisiting another section that we might introduce as regulations this morning. All the other regs, tobacco regs, local regs of Title V and body art regs, we're starting on that hopefully on this meeting, the 18th. It's going to be a little difficult because, well, I can remember, we have two or three people in mind that will probably be discussing on the 18th also. Tom, there's that we recently hired that's starting behavior training. And as soon as that's completed, we'll get going on contact tracing. And we'll also have a style of training on the 100, 200, and 700 of the ICDS. So she's going to have a little bit of training ahead of her, but we felt the major was most important going forward. Right now, all cases are being sent to the CTC, contact tracing. We're not doing it at this point without authority. As I mentioned, we have a three-member Board of Health vacancy. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Unless you have any questions or need some of that information.
I did come across a deal last night on my way here to the meeting. It's on J. Savino instead, J. Savino 1138. I don't know if I can use the power.
I guess there's been several deer hits in town. Swansea has been covering them. Chief and I were just talking about it. I mean, we probably should find some place or some procedure to get these things picked up and disposed of properly. Hate to say it on TV, but they used to go to various places and let the major take care of itself, which is a circle of life. So, you know, a lot of people frown on that. But that's the way it was before we came here. So, you know, it's, we will work on something for the 24th century.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, hello. Hello, everyone. How we doing? Couple of things first. The next two days at Town Hall are going to be very disruptive, although we're all not going to be there. We'll be off to the holiday. We have the, thanks to Karen Brady especially, she worked really hard on this. The final project for this funding round for Week Communities is happening. We're going to change all the lighting at Town Hall. So all I, every office will be worked in. So all I ask is that if there's anything out, if you want to be seen, do it away. But all the lighting will be changed. And maybe some disruption Monday morning when you come in. We apologize for that, but electricians have to get in and out of the desks and change the lighting out. So that will be, that should be done hopefully by Friday afternoon. And with the exception of the second half of the upper level Town Hall, a good part of the Town Hall upper level project will be done. We're going to work on that probably start on the design and the discussion with the Sleutman about the next phase. And then after the holiday season, we can start up construction on the other side of the building. So in the interim, I'm going to finish off the treasure collector, which basically it's just superficial, will be such a little bit of construction. So it's going well, but I think everybody be patient and be cooperation. The second thing is to deal with finances. First, I want to commend the accountant and town administrator for presenting this today. One of the reasons I came to this town was because we took our fiscal responsibility very seriously. And I found over the last few years, I've been very disappointed with the budgeting process. So to see this happen today is definitely a step in the right direction. I don't want to thank the two of you for that. Because I'm looking forward to get back on track. And then touching on what Mr. Moll said about revenues. He's exactly right. I've been telling people for all our years, hey, it's been in a groove where we've had a tremendous amount of growth, which helped both the rural segment and the local revenues. I think it's finally coming to an end. Took 12 years to get here, but I think it's finally happening. I don't know if exactly if there's a pandemic, the inflation cost. I think it's actually a combination of all the above, including the water moratorium. So I think we're definitely going to see local revenues well below expectations. So we're all going to have to tighten our belts up because we've been doing pretty well for the last dozen years or so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim. Chief, good morning, everybody. I just want to make a comment on the supplies you said about the, yeah, next week Stacy gets back, we are going to sit with her. There are a lot of calls coming in. It's every town around us, surrounding towns, it's the same thing happening there too. So how they used to do it like tons of years ago, there used to be a list form. We put it out. Anybody interested, if a deer was hit, you were on the list. So it goes in rotation, someone pick it up, has to be added, of course, and all that. So we're going to try to get something like that, have that done. So it's a system. Yeah, Swansea is covering Stacy right now. They were called, she was called, and they said they don't pick up deer. So all right, that's, if that's what they do, they don't do it, whatever, how they do it. But we're going to sit down, we're going to discuss that and figure out a system, the way we can have that done. And Stacy, I just want to say about Stacy, she's been coming in the station doing reports on IMC just about every day. Last week, she was there every day for a couple of hours, putting all the reports that she has into the system. So I'm going to give her a little credit for that. She came in and she's doing that now. So that's a big thing for us, do that. So I just want to say that. Other thing, in the police department, the last month and a half, we formed some committees in the department with the officers. So we have four committees that we're looking into now. We have the dispatch policy, we're updating on dispatch policy procedures. We are looking into police department policy procedures. We're going to update those that need to be done. Another one is traffic safety policy. We have several officers on that. We've met a couple of times already on it. We have a grant now that we're looking into purchasing some things. One of the things we're going to look at is, you know, those speed signs on, signs on Center Street where the Aggie School is? We're going to look at, we're going to at least get one of those, maybe two. This month coming up, we're going to put extra patrols on due to Christmas, the holiday coming up, New Year's. A lot of time to put extra guys on due to, yeah, health breaks that can happen during the time because Christmas coming here. So we're going to be looking, doing that. That'll be coming up with the officers because of this grant that we have, we can do that. Another one is a comfort dog committee. So what that comfort dog is, I know Somerset has it. It's a dog that you keep to have. So it works for like, if there's a domestic and there's young children, try to comfort them. We can use it for that, other things that we can use it for. Steve Hathaway is on that committee, Alyssa Bennett's on that committee, me, Lieutenant. So they've done a good job. They've checked with the schools because you can bring in the schools. They've already talked to the school, they're all on board with all that. So that's going to take some time to get done going. But we're working on those. We meet Tuesday, Wednesdays, Thursdays, all the four different committees for a couple of hours in the morning. So we're going to be doing that now for a little while. So hopefully we'll get things done like that. A great idea with the dog. Yeah, I mean, I know Somerset has it. There's a lot of times, a couple, Steve Hathaway's been calling them the Potts. Ryan, I know, has some. And they said it's terrific, it really is a good thing to have. So we want to do that. We're going to look at it, it's going to take some time, but hopefully we'll get that. And when my granddaughter comes over, she says, hi, grandpa, where's Abby, the dog? So that's why she's coming over, see you. So it's going to come from, especially that. And the Potts, he talked to them, they said it really works. It's a big help. So that's basically what we've done. So that's it for me. Chief, again.
Good morning, everybody. Fire Department's doing nothing. I have two retirements coming up in the beginning of January. I've posted those positions internally. Hopefully I can tie up on within. We are working with Jim on several things in town. We have the toy driver at the police department coming up December 4th, 9:00 a.m. As usual, we're in the back of the lot out front. We have the Santa Run, the annual Santa Run around town. That's December 12th for the reindeer to the 19th. So that's what we're working on.
Thank you. We have my children represented. Just observing, I mean, I represent the town, so. You want to speak?
Sure. I'll touch on the deer thing because Saturday, there was a gentleman down the dump who had a deer dying on his own property. Mr. Ryan's called me because Stacy was out of town. Nobody else could pick up the deer. But he's a new resident in town and he's like a city slicker. He was kind of freaked out by it. So I took a ride over there and picked the deer up for him. I donated it to the club that I belong to, Somerset's Sleutman's club. And we use that kind of meat for game dinners. And usually if Stacy's around, she'll pick him up or she'll give us a call and we'll pick him up. I, you know, I'll give the chief my phone number for when Stacy ain't around. And we'll make sure the deer gets taken care of. And we also report them to the EPO and get it tagged. Then we're there, you know, the state knows how many deer are killed in, you know, Zone 11, we live in Zone 11. But other than that, you know, my main reason I came here was about that five, five year plan. So I relay the message to Diane, but other than that, it's all good.
Did you think of that deer last night? I know, I went right to the.
See, I didn't hear about that one last night.
I know. I went right that way and it wasn't bad.
Yeah, I mean, we'll pick every one up that you can find. Even if it's man, it was too bad and we buried him out back.
It wasn't bad.
Yeah, this man, the new guy in town was quite freaked out, right? Yeah, the dude, the whole brand new boy and the deer was laying there. He said it was suffering and then died. So I took care of it.
Thank you. Second.
Like Mrs. Goulart had said earlier, our values and our goals are going to prove. Your free management being approved, we're really just pushing forward to get the facts through.
You sitting down in the water, it's summer.
I just wanted to call up. I had sent an email on Monday and hopefully I included everyone. If I did not, please let me know. But Thanksgiving week coming up, we're only here on Monday and Tuesday. So unless you have an invoice that's absolutely really useful, you could submit it the following Thanksgiving, you got your Thanksgiving, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fine.
So I just wanted to make a message about the open meeting law. So just keep in mind the Town Hall hours and keep in mind the legal holidays. So if you have a meeting that's coming up, or any of the holidays coming up, just keep that in mind. If you wait until the end of the day, you should follow up with a phone call. Don't assume it was posted, if it's important. I want to take it back on Tom Berry's comment on the tree lighting committee. It is not funded by the town, it's independent, it's funded by donations. So far, there's been a few loans that I believe EC have donated and thank you to them. And I wanted to thank the Board of Sleutman and the Board of Specials Office, Mike and Karen, Leah, they're working on a website upgrade and maybe including me in some of those discussions. So thank you. That's exciting.
Thank you.
The Veterans Breakfast was a success. We have it Saturday at the 12th. And we are ready for our ceremony tomorrow morning. Yeah, I just wanted to take it back off of what Mr. Stacy said. Just to remind them that a public hearing will be held at the Old Town Hall inside this meeting. If they are scheduled at any other facility, reach out to Mr. Stacy to let him know. His partner's just walked away. I have a question with him and I'm going to ask a question with the town administration. Being the transfer station president, I just wanted to know that Christmas falls on a Saturday. I am willing to work the transfer station that day because I'm sure residents are going to want to come in with, getting rid of their boxes. And the thing is that we cannot take any bagged trash or any wrapping paper because of what's on it. So wrapping paper just goes into your regular trash and is thrown out. But I would be more than willing to work Christmas Day, the transfer station. It's up to, you know, the higher ups or whoever they want to do. But again, just to remind them that also I am receiving transfer station wise, a lot of people are coming in with bags, diapered bags of trash. We do not accept any bagged trash at the transfer stations at all. So that's just a reminder.
Just for clarification, that they can open up their bag and dump it to the bag?
Yes, if you bring out your bag, your bag is supposed to be emptied out. Open your bag up, empty the contents out and the dumpster itself and then take your bag with you to the same open guy boy washes. Soon there is not transfer station, what's the law, not which dumps the debris of what goes where. It's a matter of care.
I have to go, just a quick update. The electricians are actually at Town Hall right now. They're finishing up their link. So there'll be a little disruption today as well. I'll be right back.
Thank you, Jim.
Hi, everyone. Tom Workman, Chairman, CPC. Just want to let folks know, we're having a public hearing. We're going to take another shot at it. I didn't have a forum at the last meeting, so a short one, one member. So we have to reschedule. So we now, we're set up at prime time. And we do have the full video, audio setup with the cable. I want to thank the town administrator, our office staff at the Town Hall, Abe Marvell, the people that helped get it, pull it together. Leanne, not here, but she helps a lot. All right, so we are working. I can't see. Thank you. So we're working together with the historical commission and also Park and Rec. We have some ongoing projects. We have one project with the historical, it's half of its completed. And we're, you know, working closely with the town clerk on some products, which I may or may not know about, we're preserving some records, which really is a serious subject, but it's something that's kind of been sitting in boxes for quite some time. And it's an important project. It benefits the people at town and it benefits, you know, the town. But it is the people's money and we want to help the people at Diane. And remember, folks, all this stuff goes to town meeting. Anything that's within the parameters of the CPC guidelines, we work with the state, the town. If it meets the parameters, we'll take a look at it. We have a board of people that will look at it and they'll review everything, the numbers, the projects, design. Then we'll, if we can move it forward to town meeting, it'll move forward. The meetings are open to the public. I don't think a lot of people know what we do. Some people are new in town. But it's basically to benefit the people at town. We try to do similar things in the past, they restored the, I think you could speak on.
Yeah, the historical society.
The historical society was the old, it was a schoolhouse, I believe. I wish it's new in town, but it was an ongoing thing. And the CPC helped them restore that. Now it's, now it's their base of operations. And I believe it's open one day a week and you can come in there. And sometimes they do tours for the kids. So it's educational so you don't forget the past, which is important. Actually, understanding the past is important for the future. I mean, I'm not giving you history class. There is some interesting history in this town.
There is some interesting history in this town, it's been around for over 300 some years. So there is a lot of history in this town that I don't think people know. That's about all I have. I mean, we're up and running, we're open for business, I'm just trying to get the quorum. Keep my fingers crossed because we've got a lot of business to conduct and we have to have a quorum and hopefully it'll fall in, you know, it's the 18th, it'll all come together and we can get moving forward on somebody's issue. So I got it. Any questions, comments? All right, thank you.
You wanted a slice.
But I have a question, sir.
No, wait.
Yes. Serving as the Town大脑 Transfer Station intended, Christmas falls on a Saturday, I would be willing to work the transfer station duty that day as long as it's in agreement with the border health. So I'm just pointing that out.
You did that last year, correct?
Christmas hasn't fallen on, I remember my first stint, it did fall on a Saturday one year, you know, I had work, but as I said, I've been more than willing to work. But I just want to remind residents again, if you're border health and do this, that's we won't only take your cotton wool, we will not take your wrapping paper, your bag of trash, you're allowed, that type of thing. But it just gives the opportunity for the residents, you can bring any Christmas tree, as long as it's all utensils up there, that type of thing. If you can, I know the local farmer is not taking Christmas trees for the future, it's, you know, as long as the utensils are up there, you know, and don't leave it, so. But I was about to leave that decision up to the border health.
I can bring it up on the 18th. Probably be more appropriate, though. I understand if you're willing to do it, and there's no retirement hall. You know, and all cleaning pays, so. I think the residents would appreciate it if there were a way to the transfer station, so, Christmas morning.
Do you have anything else, Mike?
No, I don't have anything else. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody.
I need to talk to Chief Donald Ray, I have to send. Thank you, everybody.
The meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.